This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 25th, 2022 Tenano City Council work session. If anybody have anything that they want to discuss during the work session? If not, we'll move right on to reports.
Reports are good for me.
Okay, Chamber of Commerce.
Well, I was there and Clint's here now. He's going to give us a report on what's going on over at the schools and the taxes that they're asking for.
Well, that's part of our presentation. Do you want him to do it now or during the meeting?
He can do it now, as far as I'm concerned. It'll be the second time I heard it.
It's all right with me. Thank you, George. Later. Superintendent Andacott, are you there?
Yeah, how you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt real quick. Before we get started, can we make sure everybody's mics are off?
Sounds like it to me.
All right. Well, I really appreciate the invite to be here tonight. Again, as you all know, on the February 8th ballot, we have a capital levy that we're asking our voters to maintain what we have started from 2015. This is a four-year capital levy. The last one was a six-year, and this one is for just under $6.9 million, and it allows us to continue with a lot of the things that we have in place around technology in the classroom, one-to-one computers, continuing to make some upgrades throughout. We'd shared a couple of different documents. Is there any chance that we have the newsletter that went out recently? Oh, excellent. Yeah. So if you can scroll down just a little bit more on that. So right here is perfect. So what the capital levy allows us to do is to address some of the aging systems that we have. As you drive through the district over the last several years, hopefully you've seen some marked improvements. And we want to continue to be good stewards of the facilities that we have. Again, we know that as they get older, we have systems that fail, whether they're HVAC systems or roofing facilities that just become outdated, or we're not able to service them anymore because you can't get parts for them. It's like some of the sink fixtures, just as an example, you end up having to replace the entire thing because you can't repair them. And so we have some great examples here of some of the things that we would like to continue to make improvements towards, and that's what these dollars are really meant for. So they're not used for any salaries of district employees. It's not to maintain any programs. This is really about capital projects. And that's where our computers for our kids in the classrooms and the ongoing improvement of our district facilities is what's paramount with these levy dollars. So that's really all I have is just, again, I know everyone here can access the information that we have. There is a pre-recorded presentation that's available on our district website that provides some additional kind of facts and information. And if you scroll down on this newsletter that, again, is also on our district website, there are some frequently asked questions because we know that we know that people have asked, you know, why do we have levies? And again, I know that folks can access this information. And one of the key pieces that I do want to just talk about for those in attendance tonight, the Esser dollars that we received from the federal government attached to the COVID relief. The first round of that, all of that was spent on the PPE temperature screening. You know, if you go back to when the shutdown happened, we knew that we were going to have to ramp up for a lot of different, you know, the daily attestations, temperature screening, personal protective equipment. So that first round was spent on that. And then the rest of the dollars really have been targeted towards the classroom and making sure that we're providing for dedicated subs, providing for protecting what's happening in the classroom. And we don't have a lot of funds that can be used on capital projects. We can use some of the funds for HVAC systems, but again, the amount that we received isn't enough to renovate the entire district by any means. And so we will be looking at ways where if we have funds available from Esser by the time we come to a close with that, we may be able to use some of that and, you know, partner with the funds that we're hoping to get approved. But yeah, that's, those are some of the key elements that I think are worth covering. And again, as you can see on the question, how do capital projects differ from maintenance and operations levies that, like, we had one that passed in 2020? Well, this again is specifically for facilities maintenance and repairs. The EPNO, or again, frequently called maintenance and operations levy, that is what helps pay for athletics, art, music, AP programs. So again, what's on the ballot now does not pay for any salaries or programs. It pays to maintain the facilities that we have. The things that keep our kids safe, warm, and dry. So that's what we want to focus on.
Thank you, Superintendent Andacott. Does anyone have any questions?
I would like to ask why it is so much higher than the other school districts around? For $1,000?
That's based on the total amount that we're asking for. So if you look at the amount that we're asking for, it's significantly less. Again, our district is smaller, but it's based on assessed valuation of the homes that we have. So if assessed values were significantly higher and we had more residential homes to draw from and things like that, the rate would be lower. But it's really, the ask stays the same. So if assessed values continue to go up, by the time the collection comes around, the rate could actually be lower. It could be, and if assessed values went down, the rate could go up. But the amount doesn't change. The $6,898,000, that's what we're asking for. And the rate of $1.11 is an estimate based on what is provided to us from assessed values.
Thank you.
Of course.
Anyone else?
Clint, will some of this also go to help continue funding for the COVID testing for the kids in the district?
No, the Esser dollars are what's used for COVID testing. This is not related to any of the COVID issues at all. The, we will be using, if you're familiar with our buildings, we have some buildings with safety vestibules or, you know, where you enter the building, but you haven't actually entered the building and you get buzzed in the rest of the way. We don't have that at all of the buildings, and that's something that we would like to be able to add because we know that that's a good security feature to keep our students and staff safe. But no, there won't be any of this tied to COVID testing.
Thank you.
Of course.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, Superintendent Andacott. Appreciate it very much.
Yes, thanks so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Clint.
So now should we go on to reports? We still have 20 minutes. Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Councilmember Godovak, and hello, council members. The chamber last week had our luncheon. We did a hybrid, both in-person and on Zoom. We had about 20 people in person and probably five or six on Zoom. We had Superintendent give an update on the levy, and then we also got to meet the new new police chief. And that was a great introduction into the community. We appreciated both of the folks coming and speaking. And our next meeting will be on February 16th, and that'll probably be a hybrid again with at the San Sulo Cafe and Zoom. We're going to start the Oregon Trail Days Committee meetings on February 7th. It's a Monday. So if anybody's interested in participating and planning Oregon Trail Days this year, Oregon Trail Days is going to be August 20, or July 22nd through the 24th. Then we're also planning to have a Tenano Arts Market, and that'll be April 22nd through the 24th. And then a Tenano Holiday Market, and that'll be Thanksgiving weekend, November 28th and 30th. And that's what we have in plans for right now for the chamber. Thank you.
Thanks, George. EDC?
Their meeting is tomorrow.
Okay. Experience Olympia and Beyond VCB. Fire District 12. John, anything? Fire District 12. Okay, Library. Is Linda here?
I think John was trying to say something.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Now I can hear. Yeah, now we can hear you.
Okay. I gave a report at the beginning of the month. We have our next meeting about, what, three weeks from now? For the Fire District. That's it.
Okay, Library. Linda, are you with us tonight? We might come back to her. Sometimes she doesn't come until the regular meeting. Museum. Jody, are you with us? Tenano Community Service Center. And I saw Jody there. Jody, are you here?
Jody, trying to talk, you're muted.
Okay, we'll come back to Jody. The Arch Commission.
We're trying to schedule a meeting with Kayleen and the mayor to go over the ordinance, and so we can get that in place. We do have the five people who want to apply to be on the commission.
Great. Civil Service Facade Improvement Grant had no report. Planning Commission, Public Safety. Chief of Police. Do we have the chief with us?
No.
I don't believe that Troy is here. Public Works, City Planner Building Official, Renee, are you here?
Yeah. You guys got me? Hang on. So a couple of things that I've been working on this month that I think are big, going to be, make a big improvement to the city is two major code enforcements that I'm working on is, one, as you guys know, back in October, we had a trailer fire over on Seventh Ave off of Houston. So I'm now in communications with the homeowner, the property owner, and we are working on getting the trailer abated, demoed out, and moved off the property. Also, another one is, you guys are aware of, Waret Street and Old Military Road. We've had quite a number of cars being parked on the property there. I'm also working with the property owner there. We've already removed eight vehicles off the property in the last week. And he has made promises to be in compliance within the 30 days. That's what I got, guys. If you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Don't believe Kayleen is with us tonight. And of course, the mayor is not with us. Be that.
No report.
CIP. Solid Waste Advisory Board. Steady.
We had our steady meeting on Friday, and we had a good turnout with that. We did that only on Zoom because of the COVID increase. So we're probably next month going to be on Zoom again. And we had our research director from the EDC give us an update on all the research's capability. And so I'm hoping that we can do some research in Tenano on the Ag Park more about what the economic impact's going to be for the community for that, and then some of the other places. For example, Rainier is going to be getting a Dollar General, so the economic impact of what that's going to mean for the South County area as well. And then next month, our meeting is going to be on February 18th. It's always the third Friday of the month. And we haven't solidified who the speakers are going to be next yet. That's it.
Thanks, George. TCOM, Tenano School Board.
No report for tonight.
TRPC.
Okay, I'll go ahead and handle the last two. I sent you guys the after-meeting reports on both TRPC and TPB. On both of them, we're waiting to hear who the official members are going to be because of a lot of different changes going on and people being shifted around. So we should be able to have our elections for our new board this coming month. One of the things that I found interesting from Thurston Regional Planning Council, because of our population, we may be shifting into a new phase of Thurston Regional Planning Council. And it's going to be called something in the lines of Transportation Management Area. That's actually going to be, if our population does hit with it where it's projected, that's basically an upgrade for Thurston County. It avails us to some more federal funding and things like that, so that'll help out very well. But again, I sent you guys, oh, one other thing, for TRPC, the big discussion that we had was the budget. I brought up the numbers for inflation versus what we're actually offering to pay. I asked that we go, we've authorized 4%. I've asked that we went to at least five because inflation is at seven point something right now and expect it to climb even further. So even with a pay raise, they're really not getting anything because their buying power is reduced. What we came to a conclusion is that in June or so, we'll take another look at it and see if we can adjust at that time, depending on the rate of inflation. I would also suggest that we do that for our employees as well. Inflation is just eating up everybody's pay increases. And in order to keep people, sometimes you gotta help them out a little bit. And that's pretty much all I got for both of them.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Transportation Policy Board.
Same thing. Like I said, I basically gave you a report on both of them. And I sent you guys the after-meeting reports.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have anything else for the work session? If not, we'll take a little 10-minute recess and come back at 7 o'clock.
I got one last thing. I believe the last council meeting, it was brought up about Lincoln Street, properties on Lincoln Street, the couple of houses that are dilapidated over there. And the question, I believe, was what the plans were for that area of town. I have been in contact with the property owner there as well. He and I have been in constant contact, and I am assisting him on moving forward. He does plan on developing the land.
Very good. Thank you. That was my question at the last meeting. I appreciate that, Renee. Thank you.
If you need any updates, feel free to give me a call.
Okay. Hey, everybody. I'll see you back here at 7:30.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 25th, 2022 Tenano City Council meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need approval for the agenda for the regular meeting, today's regular meeting.
I'm moved.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Need approval of the minutes of the January 11th, 2022 meeting.
I'm moved.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. We have a consent calendar consisting of January 12th, 2022 through January 25th, 2022. Payroll EFTs in the amount of $31,436.64 and claims check 30343 through 30377 and EFTs in the amount of $47,949.58 for a grand total of $79,386.22 with liquor.
No travel, no approval.
Second.
With liquor and cannabis licensed Don Juan's Mexican Kitchen and VFW Post 5878.
No problem.
I have a motion and a second. Do it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
We've already had our presentation, so that brings us to public comments, number one. Anyone in the audience would like to make public comment, please do so. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for us. Going once, going twice, I hear none. We have no public hearing, no proclamations. Old business, we have the review, the committee commission appointments for the city council members. Has everybody had a chance to review that?
Yeah, I've already discussed with the mayor that I'll stay where, with everything that I have, except moving up to the primary for Thurston Regional Planning Council.
And I like my positions. Does anybody else have anything to say?
I'm not sure about the commissions and what it is, and how do you know when there's a meeting? Does somebody notify me? Because I see that they've put me down as a solid waste advisory.
Yes, you'll get the notification of when the meetings are, the times, all that stuff. They'll send you the agenda and all that kind of good stuff. It's pretty simple. Just do the homework and read the agenda so you know what they're going to be talking about. If you have questions, don't be afraid to ask. Just jump right in there and you'll be fine.
And so they notify me through the city's email address?
Yes, ma'am. Unless you've, unless you need other arrangements, that's how they'll notify you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Can we keep going? Seems like everybody's happy with their committees.
I didn't realize my microphone was off. Excuse me. Moving on. We have an amendment to the water system plan update. And there, has everybody had a chance to take a look at that, to see what it is? I'm entertaining a motion, please.
So entertained?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Amendment number two is for the Quarry House renovation. And it's an amendment to the engineering agreement with Gibson Olsen, Gibbs and Olsen. And it made a few, I think probably because of the delay in getting bids, the project has gone up. So let's see, what does it say here? Does everybody, everybody had a chance to take a look at that?
Yeah, it was more than just the delaying stuff. Because of the delay, you got to remember price of lumber and all that kind of stuff just skyrocketed.
Right.
Can I interject here? Mike Marshall, Gibson Olsen. I'm here.
Oh, yes, Mike, please.
Yeah, this is for the Quarry House. And all the work we've done so far has been preliminary. And last week or last meeting, you guys okayed the actual funding contract for that with CDBG. So now that we have the money, then this is to put something on the street for bidding and then through construction management. So it's similar to the way that I did City Hall in that it's kind of an undefined scope. It's an as-needed scope, and then I'll bid it on the labor cost. Because that worked really well for City Hall. So that's what this is. This is to get us to a point where we can actually put that on the street now and get it built, get it fixed.
Thank you, Mike.
Move approval?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. I have to keep going back and forth. I'm doing this from my phone, so. Amendment number three is for the Quarry Pool Project. And that is also the agreement between Gibson Olsen and the city of Tenano. Mike, would you like to chime in on that one?
That is because we've expended the budget that we had set aside because I had to put it, I had to bid it five times. And in doing so, we just ate up a lot of budget dealing with all the bids and but I pretty much refused to give up and let that grant money go away.
Well, thank you for that.
That's what that is. So now that we have a contractor, Orca Pacific, and they'll be starting the next couple of weeks. So this gives me enough money to see it through completion, construction, so that we can open it up by Fourth of July.
Very happy to hear that. We're having our first Splash Bash meeting, which is a fundraiser for the Quarry Pool tomorrow night. So this will be something I'll be able to report. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, good. And I did get a price for Phase Two of that work from Orca Pacific finally today, with and without the water features. And I sent that to the mayor. And I sent that to the mayor and Kayleen today. Let's see.
Thank you very much.
Just crouch up some more, more money for that.
Okay, moving on, uh, we have a resolution, the Resolution 2022. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, so moved. Okay.
It's been moved in second and to adopt amendment number three for the Quarry Pool Project. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Yeah, just one real quick. Mike, uh, as time goes on and the interest rates are, as you see, are going up. Are we going to have to scale back any on any of the projects?
I don't think so, because we're all under contract.
Okay, thank you.
You will be able to get, you'll be able to buy less for the Quarry House, obviously. But, but no, the pool is a, the pool is a lump sum price.
Okay, and that's a, that is a hard date, July 4th?
Yes, yeah, yeah. We want to open 4th of July weekend like we, years ago and now I want to do with a fixed pool. Yeah.
Okay.
Yay.
Cause I gave, uh, I gave a soft report on, on a date at the Chamber of Commerce meeting. Didn't want to get, be, get ahead of our skis on that. So that's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, we have a resolution, resolution. Oh, I think I need a vote.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So moved. Okay, now we have a resolution, 2022 dash zero one, surplus 1998 Chevrolet S10 pickup. Recommended. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Nope, it's just housekeeping.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, now we will get back to reports. Jody, are you here?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, we are continuing with vaccine clinics. And that's just about it at the moment. We are going to be having the Robin Rudy Memorial Run last Saturday in March. We've got that up and running and you should start seeing some flyers around and a, an event. We are going to land at the Eagles, at the end of the day. That's it.
Thanks, Jody. Um, do we have a, the chief here?
So.
No, I guess not. Does anyone else have anything for the good of the order? We come to public comments, number two. If anyone in the audience has anything that they'd like to say, please state your name and address. You have three minutes. Okay, announcements. Does anyone have any announcements?
No, just real quick. Last month, the fire department either went to or assisted on 12 different fires. That's a lot.
Yes, it is. Anything else? Well, I would like to adjourn this meeting.
Non-debatable motion. Have a good night, weekend.